Go ahead and proceed with the staff presentation on item number 15. And that's consideration of modifications to the procedures for processing general plan amendment applications. And so, Madam City Manager or representative of our planning department, I see Eric Serrano is here, if you care to take it away, take it away, Eric.
Great, thank you. So, yes, I'll be doing a presentation on the general plan amendment authorization modification. I will start my presentation. All right, everybody can see that? Perfect.
Yes, we can see it.
All right, so as I said, this will be the presentation for the general plan amendment authorization. This is part of the 2021 work program. So a little bit of background on the general plan process. So it was adopted back in September of 2015. It was done as a way to provide more orderly development to allow council and the public to consider and comment on projects simultaneously, understand their impacts in case multiple projects were coming through. The idea too is also to ensure development approves a quantity of life. There was an idea that developments could provide voluntary community benefits to help mitigate impacts, so they could provide open space or other community facilities and services. The other big thing was to provide community engagement early on. Council and the public could provide comments on a project prior to it being considered for approval by council or the planning commission. The other intent was to avoid a process that is unnecessarily complex. So the process is meant to be easy for developers and the city to implement and be as transparent as we can. Another big thing is to receive council direction early on in the process, so applicants know what to expect and staff has an understanding of what council's direction would be. So this was heard as part of the council study session in July 7, 2020. There was comments and direction given to staff that was incorporated into the proposed modification, and again, this was added to the 2021 work program. So there are several cities throughout the area and state that have implemented general plan screening. Locally, we have Campbell, Mountain View, Redwood City, Santa Clara, and Sunnyvale. So this is me going through our proposed procedure. As I go through, I'll highlight the modifications that were proposing for the process. So applications will happen twice a year. This is part of PC's recommendation that I'll discuss a little bit more in detail. So they would be submitted twice a year at designated dates typically in May and November. In terms of submittal requirements, the normal requirements that we have, the current requirements are site and architectural design, net fiscal impacts, affordable housing, if any, environmental sustainability amendments requested, voluntary community amenities, if any. The two new ones that are part of this package is our traffic impacts and student generation. So this is just to understand those impacts a little bit more in detail for council and planning commission. As part of the noticing requirements, note, there'll be the normal noticing requirements we have in place for general plan amendment authorization. So that's our legal requirements, but also citywide postcards that are sent to every address. In Cupertino, a new step in this procedure would be adding planning commission to the workflow. So this is part of the direction given to staff from council, and they would provide a recommendation for council's consideration. So city council would hear planning commission's recommendation that they're authorized or not authorized a application. If the application's authorized, they would go through the normal general plan amendment process, which is reviewed by staff in different departments and agencies, as well as any environmental analysis. If it's not authorized, they may resubmit within six months. This is part of the update and go through that review. It would restart the process, they would go back to planning commission, city council for review. So one of the things that we don't have in the current procedure is a way to modify an authorized general plan amendment. So we implemented this new step into the procedure, so an applicant could request a one-time application for modifying their request. This essentially is, maybe they decided or determined that their high is incorrect or they need a different setback, what have you, instead of having them go through the whole process, so essentially let them come back once with the modifications that they request to be heard. Same submittal requirements and then same noticing requirements. So as I mentioned before, this was heard before the planning commission on January 12th. They discussed several topics, including frequency of application, planning commission review, modifications of authorized projects. So planning commission did recommend approval 5-0, except for frequency. Frequency was kind of a split vote. So three of the planning commissioners voted for twice a year and two of the planning commissioners voted for once a year in terms of hearing the frequency of general plan amendment authorizations, the application window. So this is essentially the workflow as proposed. So they apply, goes to planning commission, to council, either authorized, they're not authorized. If you're not authorized, you can submit with minor amendments within six months, and then again, either authorized or you're not authorized. One thing to note is, when you're not authorized, you can still come back at a later date with a new project or something different that doesn't shut you down from reapplying at a different point in time. In terms of noticing, we did our legal ad, placed in the newspaper, display ad. We also sent postcards to citywide, we presented to the legislative action committee, and then we have a list serve for all the general plan amendment interested parties, where we sent them an email as well, and we updated the city's website to show the potential changes. So our recommended action is that the council conduct the public hearing and find the actions exempt from SEQA and amend the procedures for processing of general plan amendment applications. And concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you very much, Eric. Does council have any questions of Eric and his presentation? Let me kick us off as we are gathering our thoughts. I'm interested in the vote at planning commission that was split between three people recommending that we have this process basically two times a year as opposed to one time a year. Can you give us a little bit more information as to the deliberative process there in terms of what the reasons were? We have it two times a year already, so maybe if you could tell us, start off by telling us why a couple of planning commissioners would prefer to have it once a year and kind of balance that against why twice a year kind of prevailed in the vote there?
Yeah, so the recommendation initially taken by staff to planning commission was once a year based off the study session in July. When planning commission discussed the item, there was a lot of conversation about one versus two, and a lot of it did center around the amount of applicants that we could potentially get, as well as the potential strain on staff resources if a lot of applications were submitted at one time. And so there was a lot of deliberation regarding that. As staff, we tried to explain, the applications, if it's once a year or twice a year, there could be a lot or they could be a little at any point in time. Once or twice a year wouldn't necessarily impact that. But a reason, part of the reason for the gatekeeper or the general plan amendment authorization process is so that council and now potentially planning commission could understand those impacts and those constraints on staff resources and even city resources as well.
Okay, understood. Does anyone else have questions of the presentation? Vice Mayor Chow.
So I think, let me clarify. So if a project is not approved the first time, they can resubmit within 30 days, but maybe resubmitted within six months? That seems to be contradicting each other. But then in six months, there is another cycle that means they can resubmit as a whole new application, right? So they need to resubmit within 30 days or six months?
So as proposed, they can submit minor amendments to the project within six months. And so those would be minor amendments to something that's already been heard by planning commission, city council. If they were going to do a brand-new project that was different from what they had provided, then they can do a new submittal during the application window of May or November.
Oh, the old one. So current one is they need to resubmit within one month.
Correct.
Too short.
Exactly.
Now we are extending it so that they can resubmit within six months. But in fact, they can also resubmit as a new project in six months anyway. Though I think some community members were concerned when we allow resubmit, it's almost like there are four times, they have four chances a year.
Okay, remember questions at this point. Any other questions, Vice Mayor Chow? Okay, so let us go to council member Moore with questions. Council member Moore.
Great, thank you. A quick couple of questions for definitions. I'm looking at the red line, page two. It's 2H and 2I. I'm wondering how substantial compliance is defined, and you use the term minor amendments, and I'm wondering how that is defined, because it seems like those terms have some ambiguity, and maybe they have something more concrete for meaning than I am thinking.
Yeah, so I'll start with substantial compliance. So when we say substantial compliance, we're looking to make sure that the project is consistent with what's been reviewed and observed by the planning commission and council. You know, there's small tweaks that applicant may make between city council and submittal to the city or review, there's just things yet better defined. And so what we're looking for is that they maintain that consistency with whatever the whatever is authorized. So typically, architectural details may change, minor things, but if they came in with a particular design, we're looking for a similar design, and we wouldn't want them to deviate from that. In regards to minor amendments, that's, we're thinking things that don't add additional impacts, clarifying things stopped by maybe planning commission or city council, a potential decrease in the intensity of the request, limited modifications, nothing major. There's, you know, a lot of different things, but ideally, planning commission or council could provide direction to the applicant so that they know what is preferred and they can modify their requests accordingly.
Okay, great, thank you very much, council member Moore. Thanks, Eric. We don't have any other answers right now for questions. And just getting council members, Wayne, Willie. Okay, so I don't have further questions. Let me open it up to, Vice Mayor Chow, you just unmuted yourself. Did you want to ask any further questions?
No, I'll do later.
No, later, okay. All right, let's open it up to the public. We do have two hands raised at this point. They are from Jennifer Griffin and Peggy Griffin. And I remind the public that if you want to comment on this, please raise your hand by the end of the first speaker's time. So welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. I'll just make a procedural comment. I did see like a yellow hand on the Zoom screen, which I'm not sure what that is. That's something new, I've never seen that before. So I just made sure my hand was back up again. Do you know how Zoom is? There's always an implement. I'll just start off saying, I'm always glad to see the postcards come in the mail from the city, and I'm glad to have seen the item about the planning commission come floating through in the mail with all the other wonderful things that we get, because it is, I think it's important to have those, because it's a reminder to the public that the business of the city goes on, even in all the other things that are happening, pandemic, schools, et cetera. I just, you know, thinking back in 2015, I remember when the city set this up, I sort of understood, I understood it pretty well at the time, and then time goes by and you start forgetting it. And I'm really glad we're having this discussion so that the public can become aware again of what this is, because it's kind of a unique process. I mean, we voted on implementing it, there was a time we didn't have it, now we have it, and we're trying to make it better. I appreciate any questions that you all had about the depth of what is considered a resubmittal, what constitutes changes in a resubmittal? And also, I have seen times in the past where final decisions were made verbally in front of the city council, and how does that fall in with the actual plant, sorry, with the person submitting the job? There will be interplay back and forth between the city council, will you accept this, will you accept this, nod, nod, et cetera. Is this considered part of the formal process, or is this, is that something that happens at the city council level, and then the submittal part is more something you would put on paper that the plant, that the staff would be controlling this modification, et cetera? What is the fine line there? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Jennifer does have about 50 seconds left, I'll keep track of that. If staff would like to, in that time, respond to that briefly. Okay, Eric.
I'm sorry, she kind of cut off. The question was it regarding what would happen if there were some back and forth on the dais between the council and the applicant, and how those modifications potentially?
I think that was the crux of the question, yes. I mean, how does that back and forth make its way into the process?
Yeah, so we would look at council's direction given to the applicant, and when the applicant would formally submit, we would work with them to ensure that they are following the direction given to them to authorize the project. So if council detailed something specific or asked for a particular requirement, then the applicant would need to include that in their submittal package in order to be consistent with the authorization.
Okay, thanks. Let's pick that up if necessary after the public comments. That'll be the three minutes. Peggy Griffin, you're next, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, council members and staff. Regardless of the frequency of the process, I encourage you to keep the GPA application process, because before we had this process, projects would be totally negotiated behind the scenes by the staff and maybe one or two desirable council members. There was no input from the public, no input from the council, the city council majority or the planning commission. By the time it came to the public's attention in the planning commission review, it was a done deal. Very little could be changed. An enormous amount of staff time and developer money had already been spent on this deal, and so changes rarely happened. And it also gives future developers a way to see what the council and public are looking for in acceptable projects. Also, the postcard, now that you've added the planning commission in this process, I encourage you to add in the guidelines that the exact date of the planning commission and the city council dates be on the postcard, because it's the final decision of the city council that's important. Another thing is, I would encourage you to add the definitions for substantial compliance and minor amendments into the guidelines. In the planning commission meeting, substantial compliance was like height, setback, any item that was, density, development agreement, those are things that are substantial compliance of the project. Any other item that was key to deciding to give the go to the project should be in this. Defining minor amendments, at the planning commission meeting, the staff said that something like adding a foot to the height would be a minor amendment, but adding a floor was not. So exactly what is it? What about setbacks? You really do need to define these so that we know whether it qualifies for a minor amendment. Timing, keep the two times a year because it's more flexible. It also reduces the possibility of a lot of review material. And add approval expiration, you know, a year or two years. If they don't get it submitted by then, they have to do it over again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peggy. Our next and last speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So as always, Peggy brings up very good points. I would add that definitions need to be given for, for example, in one chart, there's voluntary community amenities as a label, and then in the same chart, there's voluntary community benefits. What's the difference? I've been arguing for years that community benefits is just a buzzword, it means nothing, and it was supposed to be stricken from the general plan, so to have it in this process is a concern I have. And if the replacement buzzword is community amenities, I think it needs to be consistent, unless there's something I'm missing, if they are supposed to be different things. And I agree with Peggy, I agree with, I hope, all of you, that this process of some sort has to stay in place. Whether it's exactly this or not, it must be in place. Before we had a process at all, as Peggy partially described, it was a disaster. You know, stakeholders is another buzzword. Stakeholders, oh, all the stakeholders weighed in. Well, why aren't residents considered stakeholders? So this is giving a chance. So I, yeah, and I also would beware, just in general, if these, this process brings into play because there is voluntary community benefits, et cetera, et cetera, there needs to be enforceability, and maybe it's later in the process, but development agreements are not always good enough. We've learned that. Many cities have learned that the hard way. And in fact, Reed Mould actually said in a public city council meeting, speaking from not your side of the dais, oh, yeah, we want, but we want to have flexibility. You know, that is not what an agreement that is supposed to solidify things is. And we see over and over in different places, this flexibility that is allowed, and it's reinventing a wheel that everyone thought was already shaped. And that isn't okay, for this stakeholder speaking. So definitely, we need a process. I think the staff has spent
15 seconds.
...good time doing this, and I hope there's, you know, good conversation about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. We'll bring it back to council. I would like to ask, prior to our discussion and deliberation, that someone bring a motion for the purposes of that, and I'll remind you that the recommended action is the default that our city council find the action exempt from SEQA and that we adopt the resolution in our package of materials. And so let me see if I can pull a number off here.
I'll move to adopt resolution number 21-011, amending the procedures for processing general plan amendment applications. And the city council find that the proposed action is exempt from SEQA.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Does anyone second that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, council member Way seconds Vice Mayor Chow's movement of the recommendation. And so who would like to kick off our discussion here? The hand raised would be good. All right, council member Willie.
So, yeah, I'm very concerned about this. It sure seems to me that we are using this, we have moved away from the importance of the general plan. I'm a firm believer that the general plan needs to be first and foremost in all discussions. Adhere to the general plan. If and when the community decides that the general plan needs to be changed, it should be changed. Until that happens, the general plan needs to be adhered to, except on very minor issues. And if a developer wants to come and say, you know what, I'll add a traffic, a transit stop, and for doing that, I would like this additional adjustment in setback or something. But this process, to me, sends the message that you don't even talk about the general plan, just come and talk to us about community benefits. And I think that's wrong. But I hear from a couple of the residents that think it's important enough that they get the exposure first before it's up for a final vote. That being said, you know, I do think that there needs to be a true limit on any approval that's given through something like this, that there's a time limit. I do think all the wording needs to be very clear, not substantial and things of that nature mostly complies. That just is not serving, in my view, is not serving the residents. It's working around to get developers things without substantially complying with the general plan. And so I really would like to hear what the rest of the council feels. Thank you.
Great, thank you, council member Willie. Would anyone like to go next on the comments? I don't see any hands raised. Well, let me go ahead and make some comments. Having been through the entirety of this process, I was one of the dissenting votes when we originally implemented this. I also felt a lot of concern with regard to essentially having at least two meetings a year revolving around the concept of, yes, we will have a general plan amendment discussion. And I thought, you know, hearing the input from the community as well with regard to a lot of concerns of how we're, you know, sort of having this public, let's trade community benefits, you know, whatever those happen to be, for amendments to our general plan. And so I definitely hear that. However, having been here for the entirety of the life of the existence of this process, what I've noticed is that we basically morphed it into something of a format for discussion between us and the applicant. And I think of, you know, I think of a couple of projects. I think of the hotel on Deans Boulevard where the Goodyear Tire Center is, I think of the Oaks Project. And I think that the framework for discussion is decent. I mean, I would be potentially open to kind of taking that framework and applying it to when these instances come up. However, this is a gatekeeping process, and so we're essentially being asked to decide whether to take these proposals and proceed with a potential general plan amendment. So all that, I mean, I think all that is by way of saying that, I think maybe it didn't start off life ideally, but I think it is also morphed into something that is actually a pretty good framework for discussion with our, you know, so-called stakeholders, you know. I know, for me, it's staff and stakeholders, and then, and there's residents, and the residents, ultimately, everything flows from, you know, their taxes and their decisional power, right? So I don't see stakeholders as a negative term, but it's also something that gives some clarity to people as to how we function and operate. So I would actually support the motion on the table, as well as some of the comments with regard to trying to a little bit more precisely define what we mean by substantial compliance and minor amenities. And then with regard to the approval expirations, yes, absolutely. I mean, 10-year entitlement periods where we're kind of stuck here half a decade later wondering, you know, where this project is, I think we need to work on that, you know, very, very much so. But again, that's part of the project itself. I mean, we can define those entitlement periods as we're making those discussions. So those are my comments. Anyone else? All right, we have council member Way with her hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I do agree with Mayor Paul. I think this is a gateway program. It actually gives the council and the planning commissioner and the public one extra layer to find out what the project really is. And then because it's not a final approval, it is just giving approval for the project to go ahead. So I really like to have, we have this, another layer. And I did listen to the planning commissioner, and I listened to their debate, twice a year, once a year. And I agree that twice a year is more flexible, it doesn't crowd the staff time if a lot of projects are coming on if we're just once a year. So I do like the twice a year. And I asked the staff a lot of questions on our agenda review already, like what is the traffic report? How do they get a student generation report? And I get some satisfactory answers. So I, my answer is pretty much being answered by the staff during my review agenda. And so I do think this is a good way to open up discussions, like a lot, a lot of our residents saying that they want to hear about it first. So I think this is a good way to do it, and I'd like to keep it twice a year. And I believe that it is, just gives more flexibility. It doesn't crowd the staff time. So I am agree with, with Mayor Paul that I think this is a good project. And this is a good way to go ahead and do our project.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. We have Vice Mayor Chow with her hand up. Vice Mayor Chow.
Oh, okay. So I have a few comments. First, I agree that there should be exact meeting dates on the notification. And the second, and there should, I would like an explanation on substantial compliance and minor amendment. It may not be in the municipal code, but it should at least be written out as the, something, a document linked to, to the municipal code, if it's not available today. And then I hope that we, in terms of notification, we also include a notice in the scene. I think the scene is a magazine now. Everyone really are looking forward to receive now. And since we don't have a newspaper, so let's put a notice in the scene. And then for community benefits, I would like to, I believe I suggested this last time. As much as the pitfall there is, as, as since they are including that, we should provide a list of desirable benefits for Cupertino for the applicants to consider. Because they, when they request for this, they do want to show that how much benefit they are. The project is benefiting Cupertino, so maybe we should consider this in a new future meeting. Benefits we would like to see for Cupertino, like transit, like bypass, that kind of things. And I agree that we should have an expiration date for the approval. Maybe let's say five years the project should be submitted and deemed the com, the project application should be submitted and deemed complete, say within five years of the approval of the GPR authorization. And then final one, we allow one-time reapplication to modify the intensity of the modification. This is after, this is already approved. Then I wonder what's the notification process? And what exactly does it mean, intensity of the amendment? Do they get to, so they don't get to change the height, but they get to change maybe units per acre? Could we clarify that? And then maybe, do, does that need another notification to the public? Okay. The, the previous ones are requests, the last one is a question.
Yes, I, I noticed that. So let me bring it over to staff with regard to this one-time application of modify the intensity and your question related to that. Who do you want to care to? Eric?
Yeah. So pretty much if it's, if there's any, any modification to any of the requests for general plan amendment that was authorized, so if they're, if they're authorized for a unit count or an office allocation or a height or setback, anything like that, anything that increases it or modifies it, essentially go back for review. Staff would not make that determination. It would be done by council. So that's pretty much it. It, it's never at the, at staff's discretion.
Okay.
Wait, I don't understand. So the project needs to be substantially compliant and with the authorization?
Correct.
And then we allow one-time reapplication? What does this mean?
So
It's substantially compliant. Then they get to change the intensity?
No, so they
For example.
Whatever's authorized is what is supposed to be submitted to the city for review. If they're going through that review process and they make a modification to the general plan amendment request, then that would have to come back and be reviewed by council.
Oh, so that can be done one time?
Correct. We just don't want them to be like, oh, I, I, I need this more height, I need this more setback, and keep coming and keep coming. The idea is you get one chance to come
So this is
Modification for review.
This is when the staff doesn't consider it's substantially compliant through the authorization?
Partly, but also if during the review process, they, you know, they, they realize that something wouldn't work for their project, so now they're, they're needing an extra height or they need a, a different type of setback instead of a one-to-one ratio, they need a 1.5 to one ratio, something like that, then that would come back for review.
Then my question would be, in that case, what's the notification requirement?
It would, it would be postcards and noticing.
Do we need to do the same thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that correct in the, okay?
Yeah, let me, let me go on. And so we've, so, so I did, I, I've taken the question time and added it to deliberation time and, yeah, let, let's, let's give everyone a chance to deliberate first before we possibly head back. Councilmember Moore, I, I don't think you made any comments yet on this. Would you care to comment on, on the motion on the, on the dais?
Well, I might consider making a friendly amendment. So one of the problems that I have with this is the, the voluntary community amenities. And I was just kind of thinking, well, just to explain what the problem is, is what we've seen in the past is, in these development agreements, if a certain agency perhaps is, is going to be given money, and then they have a lot of supporters who want to have that development agreement passed through because they're, they're going to get what, what they're wanting for their particular agency. And that, that becomes a very contentious issue in the community, and it makes the, the meetings can become rather unpleasant, just, just being a member of the audience. And so I, I would like to find some way with these voluntary community amenities to either, either remove them or provide a, an applicant and an array of suggestions for what those could be somehow, so that we could steer clear of muddying the waters with a plan that has community amenities which certain people might want to lobby a sol for approving a project over. Say, you know, say the project is, you know, many miles away from you, and, but you're going to get an amenity from, from that project, you're not going to have the impact of that project. So you, you may be going to many meetings trying to push for, for that item. So I, I think you understand where, where I'm getting at here. So like I said, I might make a friendly amendment to your motion.
Okay, great. So that, that cycles us through commentary and questions. There is a little bit of time left with regard to, you know, some, some people's allocated time. I'd be happy to seat over what I have left. I, I would be supportive of what we have on the table. I could entertain friendly amendments as well, as, as they have been, you know, possibly suggested or just outright suggested during our deliberation. So let me ask this. Would anyone like to attempt to amend the motion on the table at this point? And Councilmember Wei, you have your hand up.
Yes, I, I, okay. So community amendment, amenities, to me, there are a lot of things like, you know, meeting rooms and things that benefit the whole community. And this is a gateway program. I, I think if we just open it up to community amenities and then let the, that it comes out what it is, and then we can always say no to it. I, I, I don't feel that we are afraid of people's comments, our residents' comments, because if it's good for one, residence is not good for the other. We'll hear from both of them. So I just think that a general community amen, amenities is really a good concept to me, because we want, we want to give back to our community in all the ways. So I, I, I'm a little concerned that if we take it off, we might not even get any.
Okay. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand up next.
So I have some language modification at the show, after everyone finished comments.
Well, in fact, feel free to share it now if you wanted to.
It's something I had mentioned earlier, just summarize our, what we said earlier.
Right, I mean, you're the, you're the movement, and so, or, or was Councilmember Willie the, the person who made the motion?
It was Vice Mayor Chow.
Vice Mayor Chow made the mo, motion? Okay. So you, you could feel free to, 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 to place a new motion on the table since you're the movement. I, I don't think you would procedurally suggest a friendly amendment for your own motion.
So I'm, I guess I'm suggesting amendment for my own motion, and I want to clarify what Kitty's request for friendly amendment. So this is what I'm hoping to amend. Number one, I mentioned, this is under clause E of one of these sections regarding notification. So I hope to add that the postcard should include the project features and meeting dates. And
Clarify, Vice Mayor Chow. Are you saying that the, the language that is not underlined is what is in your motion, but the underlined language is the additional language?
Yeah, underlined is the addition.
Okay, great.
Okay. So the staff might want to clean up the language. Basically, the postcard should have certain details. I think some postcards had pretty good details, like the number of units, height, and setbacks, those requests. Some postcards didn't before. So I hope it, it does include some important project features and meeting dates should be listed. And also I hope to have a notice in the scene.
Okay, let's take these one at a time. Would staff like to comment on this? Is this, is this feasible? And are we comfortable with the language, either as is or as a potential placeholder for, for, for language that would end up in, in our, in our second reading of this? No, this is actually just a resolution. So would staff like to comment on this proposed language change?
I can take that one. Pue Gosch, Planning Manager with the
Great, welcome, Pue.
Hi. So with regard to the suggested language, you know, when we have one project that is coming through for a general plan amendment authorization, adding project features to the postcard, given the amount of room that we have, is not a problem. It becomes a problem when we have multiple projects that are coming in for a general plan amendment authorization. And because we try to club all those together on one postcard, so the community doesn't get multiple postcards on the same issue and get confused, we try to put them all in one package because it's going to be one hearing item. And so as a result, it gets, it depends on, on the project and how many we have. So having a little flexibility on that front gives us the flexibility to kind of try to lay it out and see what works on the postcard itself. With regard to the meeting details being listed in the postcard, they always are. We like, we always send the postcard out with a firm planning commission meeting date. The city council meeting date is, is always listed as a tentative in general, because agendas change and things shift. So we put a date in, but we always put a tentative, you know, we put tentative on it, just to be clear. And in general, we do put, you know, notices out in social media. We also publish, put a notice in the scene, space permitting. So that is something that is kind of our operational practices, that we do that. So if the council wishes, you know, we can certainly, this is language that could be added, but from a practical perspective, I just wanted to give staff's perspective on it.
Might I add just a thing about, thank you, Pue, for doing that. On the scene, the publication date is every other month. We have to know two months in advance, so we're writing stuff and putting, preparing a scene issue two months ahead of the time that it's published. And so putting it in this, being prescriptive enough to put it in the scene is going to make it very inflexible. I might suggest maybe some language that says, kind of like what Pue said, and other city publications, that might be an items of interest, it might be something else, or it might be the scene if it, the key is right in terms of publication date.
Okay.
Okay, is that, is that, okay, so, so I'm hearing that we want some flexibility there, both in terms of providing project features as well as where the notice goes. And the meeting dates, the planning is date certain, whereas council is just kind of, you know, by nature, a, a bit more flexible depending on, on scheduling. So that, that all being said, Vice Mayor Chow, are you still wanting?
I'm open for the staff to suggest something that has more flexibility.
Okay, well, I, I would suggest that I think their, their current procedure probably imparts that flexibility sufficiently. And so the question is, is there anything in this language that you still want to retain based upon your, what, what you've heard from staff now?
I'm not married to this, so if
Okay.
I can
Okay, let's look at your second proposed change, where you state the project application should be submitted and deemed complete within five years. Would staff like to speak to that?
I can speak to that a little bit. You know, with, with projects coming in, you know, particularly ones that are coming in as a general plan amendment authorization, it's not a bad idea to have an expiration date on those, actually. But I, you know, I hate to say this, but five years almost seems too much. I'll leave it to council to consider what they, you know, would, would like to see. It's not something that we would object to necessarily.
Five years is just something from the top of my head, so I, whatever number that's more reasonable. But maybe there should be a, a deadline.
I, I'd just like to add one more item. You know, it would be nice to have a project application submitted, not necessarily deemed complete, because there's a lot that goes into it, you know, traffic analysis, there's a bunch of stuff that needs to happen before we deem a project complete. So at least be submitted within two years with, you know, this movement, with consistent movement in the process. That would be something that would be nice to have.
Submitted within two years? And you said, cause
And are you, within, within two years of, of when are we referring to here?
One year, two years of authorization, whatever the council picks.
Okay. The authorization, got it. Okay, well, that seems amenable. So let me suggest that you remove your motion from the dais and then you resubmit another motion with the second language. I, I would suggest that you delete the first changes because of the reasons that were described.
And, and may I request that should be changed to shall, so that it's not just
To remove the ambiguity from there? Okay.
Yes.
The project application shall be submitted. All right, thank you, Madam City Attorney. Okay, so Vice Mayor Chow, would you like to do that? Withdraw your motion and resubmit with this added language here?
Okay. So this is now considered amendment or?
Well, I, I don't know what the procedure would be for a friendly amendment of your own motion, so I would just
Okay.
Just you, right?
Okay, so let me finish then. So the, the next one is, I think, I hope that we do have a written definition or description of substantial compliance and minor amendment. It may or may not be in the municipal code? Maybe it's related, it's connected to the application form maybe.
Yeah, I, I think those are two different points of, of, of the, of the, of the, of the resolution. So substantial compliance is in subpoint H under two, describing the procedure, where it states, quote, "A project that applies for processing should be in substantial compliance with the project authorized by council." And then in subpoint I of the red lines, it talks about how proposals not authorized by the council at first meeting may be resubmitted with, quote, "minor amendments." So I, I, I don't know if it is a good idea to try to Um, so, I, I, I don't know if it is a good idea to try to come up with these definitions, um, right here. Um, so, so let me start by asking if, if staff has those, uh, has thoughts on those and whether those are ready, first of all, at this point?
Um, I can try to take that to, um, Paul. Uh, with regard to substantial compliance, I think what we're trying to say is that if you have a project, now that begins in a project that is a residential project with a hotel component, for example, um, but turns around and tries to resubmit a project that has an office component with, uh, you know, or some other commercial component with a residential, uh, component, but needing the same general plan amendment standards that they had requested for, uh, authorization, for example, an increased height or a reduced setback. That would not be a substantial, a project that substantially complies with what was brought forward to council to consider. So that's an example, and, and we don't necessarily have definitions in the, in the municipal code at this point. Um, and also, uh, we wanted to have a little bit of flexibility in terms of what substantial compliance is. For example, architectural materials may not be identical to what is presented at the first pass, um, and might actually improve over time, uh, as the project develops based on architectural input from our consultants or other, uh, community. So, uh, it would be nice to have a little bit of flexibility in that, but that is certainly up for the council to consider. Uh, with regard to the minor amendment issue, I, I did wanna point out that that, that subsection I was written in, uh, to the original, uh, procedures, uh, because there was a concern that, uh, or there were comments that, you know, there might be direction from, uh, the council that says, hey, you know, you need, uh, you're saying you need two additional stories in height, but if you were to knock off one story and just have a single story, uh, in height that you're asking for, if we might have considered the project. And that, that is to allow, uh, for an applicant to bring back a modified project with just one story height increase as opposed to a two, for the council to consider. So, the whole purpose of that minor amendments was to allow to incorporate specific direction from council in terms of what the council might entertain for authorization. So, I, I did wanna clarify that regarding the minor amendments.
Right, I mean, do you, do you think that, given the benefit of time, those terms would be able to be defined? Uh, is, is probably another way of asking the question.
Yeah, we could, we could certainly, as, um, uh, you know, uh, as, uh, C- Councilmember Chow is kind of writing in there, we could certainly come up with administrative regulations around that, guidelines around it, to kind of explain to the applicants what those two things mean, so that, you know, they're clear about what is expected from them. Uh, we can write that in, uh, but if council wishes to have it be taken into the policy, then we will have to think about it a little harder and come back with something. Um, but again, for both those things, uh, having a little bit of flexibility and power.
Okay, understood. Um, Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, you have other items, I believe, that you want to...
So, I, I think it makes sense for this, this is not in the municipal code, and as, uh, Q said that the staff might need to adjust it as time, if things change, so.
Right.
Just do without council approval. And another is the direction to staff, I think. I'm a little unclear what Kitty would like to suggest as friendly amendment. And I was hoping maybe this item, I think we probably should bring it back to talk about the format of community amenities we would like to see, and is that, that's probably something we, I think the staff doesn't have, is ready, we, we can't really come up today. So, Kitty, could you clarify a little, what was your amendment? Is there some language you'd, you'd like to suggest?
Um, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, so looking under item three, voluntary community amenities, I would either strike the entire section, seriously, or, um, you could add a little bit of language to it. Um, under A, it says, uh, if, if staff could pull up the red line, um, so that we could look at item three voluntary community amenities, that would help.
Here, um, oh, but I need to stop. I have it here, I'll just, yeah. So here? This is a red icon, Jane, but this part has no red line.
Okay, um, so under, under A, I would, um, for purposes of, of this policy, voluntary community amenities are defined as facilities, land, or funding contributions to ensure that any development with a general plan amendment application equitably, add the word equitably enhances the quality of life in the city, you can put the word equitably anywhere you want there, but get the word equitable. Um, and then I would actually strike off school resources, because that is the, that is the purview of the school. Um, uh, it's a separate agency, um, so that they, like, right now, they're working on a parcel tax. Um, I would be very hesitant of, of, have, having the, these developments tied into the, the CUSD or Fremont Union High School District or Danza College, um, because they have their own funding mechanisms, so I'm, I'm a little concerned about that item there, so I would actually strike it. Um, I agree with public open space, parks and trails, again, with equity, um, being tantamount. You got, have, that has to be there first, um, and I would, um, under public facilities, I would just leave it at item three, leave it at public facilities, um, and cross off utilities, et cetera, on the rest, I would just leave it, leave it more open-ended, and, um, so, that is the extent of what I, if you're going to keep it, that's what I would do. I would be limiting it, um, severely.
Well, I, let, let me make sure that what you're suggesting captures that, that sentiment if we proceed. So you want the word equitably in front of enhances on the end of the first page that's shown here. So, so, so to clarify what you mean by equitably, you had talked earlier about having some kind of link to the impacts of the project on, on people that are more directly affected. I- is that part of what you mean by equitably, or, because equitably is, is, is kind of a nebulous term, right? So, so maybe elaborating on that, and, and maybe that...
Well, well, first, I think the whole volun- the community amenities, I, I don't like it. I, I, I've never liked it, um, I, I don't like this section at all. Um, and then, then the second part that you have is, y- you have a project, and, and what it, this tends to le- lead towards is that you have a project that maybe people don't want, like I said before. Maybe people don't want, and especially the people who live around it, they're gonna be heavily impacted by it. And yet, a community benefit might happen that a lot of other people really, really want, that have noth- they're, they don't live anywhere near the project, they're, but they're really excited about this. I, you know, I gave this example in our agenda meeting about the Ferris wheel. Some people might really wanna have a Ferris wheel, and so they are gonna lobby us for it, they really want it, and, um, and, and that's that, and so we're pushed as city council members, um, to, to approve this, because it's gonna have this, this great, this great amenity. Um, and then it muddies the water when we're trying to consider a project, and the voices of the people who live around the project that are gonna get impacted by it, um, get drowned out by the people who want the Ferris wheel. Um, so that's, that's the type of thing I would want to avoid. Um, and then we have this issue of school resources. Uh, when you talk about equity, the school resources are going to impact the people whose children are in the schools at that time, depending on what schools it, they are. And, and the schools are able to do their own funding on their own. They're able to, um, as we're watching right now, put out parcel taxes, do, uh, bonds. We've, we passed the huge bond measure for Fremont, um, I mean, for Foothill-Danza. And then, uh, then with public open space, parks and trails, that one's tricky to do equitably. Um, I mean, maybe, maybe that one should not be there, I don't know. Um, but I, I think this needs to be, uh, spoken, uh, to, um, and, uh, we do need to hash this out. I'm a little surprised when the, I was not at the general plan amendment, um, process meeting for, uh, Planning Commission, I, because I got moved on to, uh, city council, so I did not get to speak to this. Uh, but one thing that bothered me was that the, the bene- uh, community benefits was not, um, taken out as a separate item to be discussed and really worked through. If this is really what we wanna do, I'm curious if the cities around us are doing this. Um, we do know that certain o- other cities have a general plan amendment process. Do they have, um, community amenities? How's it working for them? What are the, what's the nature of them as well? Um, those types of things.
Okay, uh, I, um, I, I, I understand the sentiment. Um, I, I just, I still wonder whether the term equitably adequately captures, uh, what you're trying to uh, express here, uh, for, for the purposes of, of future guidance.
I think, I, um, Mayor Paul, I think it, um, how, how do you make voluntary community amenities fair and reasonable? Maybe if I just turn it around and, and pose it as a question, um, you know, how are we gonna evaluate them in the future? What's our scale, what, I, I have no way of knowing how we could even make decisions on this. What are our metrics?
I mean, w- one could very well say that just the addition of the term equitably does signpost the, um, the consideration for, for future councils and the public. Um, i- i- it's just that one person's equity might be considered another person's lack of equity. So, I, I mean, I just, I, I, I think if you were a little bit more specific in terms of, um, impacts on, um, the, the immediate environs of the project, for instance, that might help, um, parse out with, with more definitiveness, you know, what we would think of as, as equity. But I'm, like I said, I mean, this was the aspect of this whole process uh, that I had real concerns with, or at least one of the, the two major concerns, uh, when we first implemented this, that ultimately this becomes some kind of, you know, public horse trading show, and I, I, I just got the sense that there were a lot of people in our community that, um, had some antipathy regarding, you know, that aspect of it. You know, that, that being the case, I mean, I, I don't know precisely what the best, um, item is i- i- in terms of how to deal with this, but let me go on to other council members that do have their hands raised. Um, perhaps, you know, we can get some, uh, some clarity, uh, at, at least insofar as the, the sentiment of our, of our group goes. So, Councilmember Willie, you are next.
Yeah, uh, I think the fact that we're all struggling so much with this terminology and this vagueness, I, I think staff really does need to go and spend more time crafting something that is more very definitive. Okay, but that being said, the specific items that I think, uh, I'm still concerned with, you know, um, sending out this notification, and so number one is, I hear, well, the five-by-seven postcard likely isn't gonna have enough room to put the information in it. Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna take that as an answer in the sense that we're here to serve the residents. We have to get the message out to the residents so that they know whether or not they're gonna wanna come to the city council meeting to listen to this or not. And for that information that gets sent out on that postcard, I personally say it's gotta include the variances that the developer is asking for. If the, if the, uh, general plan says forty-five feet and they're asking for sixty feet, that's gotta be on the postcard. If they're at, if the city says it's a one-to-one building plane and they're saying they want, uh, one to two, it's gotta be on the, uh, on the postcard. If the setback is thirty-five feet and they're saying they want twenty, it's gotta be on the postcard. And there's ways to handle this that I didn't hear from staff. The five-by-eight postcard can be a folded five-by-eight postcard, and you've just quadrupled the space. So, so, that to me has got to be first and foremost, is that we're getting the word, the important information out. Then I was hearing that, well, we have a variety of ways, and, and it may be done this way, or it may be done that way, to notice the public. No, it's gotta be consistent. The residents have gotta know that either it's in the scene or it's in the postcard, not that, well, this project is being done on next door and this project is being noticed in this way. It's gotta be definitive upfront, and then that, that direction has gotta be on the, uh, city website saying, development information and meeting information is, you know, found here, period. And then it's gotta be detailed and complete, because we're here to serve the residents, and skirting around and being vague and not supplying all the information and not doing it consistently, to me, that, that doesn't show poorly for, for us. So, I'll leave it at that. I don't think it's ready tonight. I think those issues need to be addressed and need to be in a future slide.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Wei, you're next on, uh, comments and deliberation.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, because, um, it look, I have been watching the Gateway Program. This is a gateway program. Um, when we, even, if, if it goes to go ahead, it still has to come back to us for approval. I really would like to have, trust our staff, they have the expertise, and they will bring things back to us that's, um, you know, any, any minor, whether it's minor or it's substantial, we will see it. So, I, 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 I see this as a gateway program, a preliminary, actually it's one layer before the real project comes to us. So I agree with John, we need to have, um, s- consistent notice, um, how do we notice the residents? So, I do understand the staff said we can't do it on the scene because of the timeline. So, postcards plus papers plus, postcard can say, check the website, and this is gonna be the project description, so that it's even more complete. Yes, have a consistent way to notify our residents. I really agree with John on that. And as for amenities, I actually would like to expand it to say, um, the following but not limited to. Because, like I said, education is not one-size-fits-all, any development project is not one-size-fits, fits-all. A project in certain places might have specific amenities that could benefit the whole community. So make it flexible so that it's, we can see what, what could happen, and let us take a look at it, and I, we as council still has the final say. So I actually think we should even expand it, say, the following but not limited to. So let the imagination, let the, um, um, what needs to be done, or something that can surprise us. So, I, I think it's really nice to have that option, so to have community amenities that's not limited to what we can think of. Things change, right? Times change, development change. So, I think as flexible as we could, so that we can look at the project from a new point of view and let, um, you know, the future happen to us. I, I really think that's, that I would become, I highly recommend that. And another thing about, um, uh, this, I just feel that we are getting to, into two details on a gateway program. This is the first time that they just get a permission to go ahead. We still have time to review everything, so I would like to make it simpler and not as restrictive, and so that we have more options, you know, that, that's my opinion.
Okay, great, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand up next. Uh, I'm, I, I just want you to know that after this round, I will close it out. It seems like, uh, if we're not gonna get to consensus, it would be, uh, find a table with, uh, some uh, direction to staff to come back and bring it back to us. Um, but at this point, uh, let's, let's finish it off with Vice Mayor Chow's, uh, and, and Councilmember Remorse's comments, and, uh, we can, uh, take it as direction in terms of our deliberative process so far, uh, in terms of bringing it back to us at a future date. So Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. Um, first, I, I agree with the mayor that equi- equitable is a term that's nebulous. I've seen it used, it, it simply becomes a subjective term for a policymaker to favor their favorite group. One person's equity, it would be discrimination in another person's eye, and you could favor any group and call it equitable. So, unless we define exactly what that means, that's not used such a, it's popular nowadays, I know, but, um, if, if we don't define, it doesn't mean anything. And then second, I'd like to echo John's, uh, request that, actually, um, Palo Alto sends out notice for general plan amendment in nine-by-twelve postcard colored, colored post that part card, like the kind that you receive from real estate agent. So, that you can miss, because a lot of times people say they didn't see the postcards from the city. So maybe that's something we could move towards, then we can improve more details on. Then we can improve more details on a nine-by-12 postcard. Something to consider. Yeah, and then I think community benefits. I do, I do like to see that in this ordinance and, but I would like to see it a little more defined. For example, it might not be just parks and the open space. It could be some park amenities, water features, something that's a little more defined that, that's bring benefit the community. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up.
I do. Okay, I can see that the, the word equitable is, is needs some defining. There was a suggestion of perhaps having these voluntary amenities be in some ways mitigating the impacts of the project to the neighboring residents who would be impacted. And that is actually supposed to be handled through the Environmental Impact Board, having mitigations. And the city council would make a decision whether or not we accepted those mitigations. So I think personally that we need, we should perhaps have a study session on voluntary community amenities and come to some agreement because we have some polar opinions about, about it. And I think that having some discussion could be beneficial. I, unfortunately, because of that, it makes me not want to move ahead with this resolution as it is right now.
Okay, well, I, I'm inclined to agree with you. I don't think we're at consensus. I don't think we're at a point where we can really take what we've spoken of and adequately bring it forward for a motion that will pass tonight. And so what I will ask is for staff to take the commentary that has been provided by council tonight and provide us some options. We do have some definitional questions with regard to substantial compliance and minor amendments. We have some concerns with the voluntary amenity process. Could we potentially tie it a little bit more closely to mitigations in the sense that we would be defining these types of amenities a little bit more in the sense that there are some impacts upon the community and making a little bit closer to that. And then there were questions about notice. Are we tied to a postcard of a certain size? Or could it be perhaps bigger and a bi-fold, for instance? And I, I think we have had a pretty clear discussion in terms of the concerns. Does, does staff feel comfortable at this point going forward and bringing this back to us with a more defined palette of options that we could at that point take up and adopt and discuss as to whether those particular items have been, have been met? City manager, Madam City Manager?
Yeah, I, I think we're comfortable. Did you have other questions, Q? And then I have a suggestion to, to address one of Councilmember Moore's concerns. But Q, did you have?
I, I did have a question. I think staff would like a little more direction in terms of the, you know, the voluntary community amenities is meant to be a palette of things that people can pick from and not necessarily tied specifically to impacts because we're not doing that analysis at that particular time. All we're doing with these projects is just presenting them to council for their consideration. Do you even just, just, you know, can you even imagine this in your town based on what they're asking for? So to, you know, for, there is no analysis from staff on this other than this is what is being proposed and here are the general plan amendments that are being requested. And here's what they're offering. And, and so, so this is, you know, I'm trying to get a sense of what the council is expecting from staff for these when these are being presented, particularly around that.
Q, perhaps we could solve that problem when we bring this back? Just remind, it's, it's a complicated subject all the way around. So maybe it's best if we bring this gatekeeper process kind of in the context of where a project might progress. Right? And so how many times does the council see this project? So let's say, for example, they allow a certain project to acquire for a general plan amendment. And it goes through the process. How many other times will they see this project? And how many times, more times will this project be noticed for the public depending upon what stage of the project, the project is in? Because it's true, it is the initial start. So let us, we'll, we'll try that, we'll try and figure that out. And then to try and help with this word of equity, what I heard Councilmember Moore describing though was not exactly equity, but more the, if you put the word direct in there, does it start to solve that problem? For you? So instead of using the word equitable, putting direct?
If I may, Mayor, try to clarify a little the direction.
Yes, yes, I'm City Attorney.
I think what I'm hearing is we heard a lot of different comments on these topics of, of postcards, voluntary community benefits and definition of substantial compliance and minor amendments. And I think what your motion was, or direction to staff was, was to come back with different options. So you could address the issue of defining, you know, substantial compliance or minor amendments by either leaving it as it is up to staff or putting these definitions in the ordinance or putting these definitions in an administrative guidance that could be available for the applicants. And here's some things to think about and you can discuss that. And on notice, we could say, you could have this language being more specific about the notice or we leave it vague and this is how it's implemented and council can discuss that. And on community benefits, we could say, you could leave it the way it is. You could take it out completely. Or you could, you know, try to broaden the, what is to be considered or you could try to narrow it to what considered. And we could have that language all there for council to discuss. And so staff isn't making decisions about what is or isn't the direction of council right now that we would bring forward. But instead, we would bring forward a lot of options of the different things that we've heard. And staff may have a recommendation of which one to move forward with. But is that what you're looking for or are you looking for something else?
No, no, I, I, I think it is precisely what you're describing, that we want the palette of options in front of us so that we, you know, feel like it's been, it's been vetted essentially in terms of the, of course, the extremes are easy, right? I mean, if you're talking about the, if you're talking about the voluntary community amenities, you've got what's there, you've got taking it out, right? I mean, but having some kind of, you know, middle ground where we've taken a look at the idea of, of, of being equitable or perhaps tied a little bit more to what's going on with regard to this particular project. I mean, it would be good to have staff look into it and see what our particular options are there.
Like a menu.
Try to, you know, legislate from the dice, so to speak, on it. And then, you know, the rest of it, I, I do have a couple of follow-ups in terms of our timing and the process. When is the next general plan amendment gatekeeping meeting due? Was that something that we're looking at impending? And how does that kind of fit vis-a-vis our ability to bring this back? Because I'm not expecting this to come back on February 16th because that would, you know, give staff less than a week to really, you know, make some changes. But how are we looking in terms of how this would affect the process going forward for this next iteration? When, when is the next time, I guess is the?
When's the next window is he's asking?
What will be the planning on having this?
We had a window closed in November, so we do have one general plan amendment authorization application. So that is pending, that is, you know, was on hold. Just kind of looking to see where the council might be. We will actually take that forward, knowing that this is getting pushed out. So, but in general, for the next cycle, the way that the current policy is written is that the window would open in the, in January. So, so you could make applications all the way until the third Monday in January. It's how it's currently written. Correct if I'm wrong, Eric.
Okay, so that window has passed already, right?
So Eric has the new window.
Yeah, the, so with the proposal, we're still proposing twice a year. It's still May, November, so nothing's changed from the previous one. So it'd be May and November where they could apply for a general plan amendment and have these potential policies in place.
Okay, so we do have a pending application. That's going to be sometime in the, okay. And then, and then we're looking at May potentially. Yes, I, I would think that we could bring this back within the next two or three meetings, right? Not necessarily February 16th, but perhaps sometime in, in March or April to, you know, kind of give ourselves enough time to process everything that's been discussed. And so, yeah, unless there are objections, I will go ahead and ask that staff take our feedback and bring it back to us sometime the next several meetings. Does anyone see any other items before I table this and we move on to the next item on our agenda that we need to cover for this? Okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing anybody with their hands raised or looking to speak. And so that's what we'll do. I'll table this item until a future time when staff has had time to take our input and, and process it. Our next item is going to be ordinances and action items. The subject is considering municipal code amendments adding chapter 2.100, which is the regulation of lobbying activities being proposed to Title II under administration and personnel of our municipal code. Does, the, so who in staff is providing the, the presentation on this item?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Katie Nomura, Assistant to the City Manager.
Great, welcome Katie, thank you.
All right. So we are bringing forward this ordinance by, as requested by Mayor Paul and Vice Mayor Chow. And the other ordinances within Santa Clara County are with Santa Clara, San Jose, Santa Clara County, Milpitas, and Palo Alto. The first three were more closely related to what we are reviewing today. Milpitas and Palo Alto had more limited scope. The proposed ordinance regulates lobbyists seeking to influence city decisions. And it would require that they register with the city and pay certain fees, disclose their identity and their clients while lobbying with city or city officials, and to file a report of lobbying activities twice a year with the city. So this lobbyists include contract lobbyists, business lobbyists or organization lobbyists, and expenditure lobbyists. So essentially someone who's contracted for lobbying, anyone who that's primarily what their business does or they have employees that are solely dedicated to lobbying. And expenditure lobbyists where they have expenditures that influence others to influence decisions of the city. And we have a series of exemptions that are outlined in the staff report and outlined in the ordinance itself. And we listed a few examples here. For example, public officials are exempt, nonprofits are exempt unless they've been funded specifically for a particular issue that's being brought and considered by the city. Business owners, not their staff, but just the owners. So this is intended for those small business owners. And the list is here for your review. So registration is required and they must renew annually. They have to disclose their information, the business they work for, if applicable, client information, as well as issues they're seeking to influence and payments that they've received, fees and fines. They would pay a registration and renewal fee. And this will be determined in the future after we appropriately determine the cost of the program and a good cost recovery fee. And that will be brought forward as part of the annual fee schedule update in April. There is also a client fee for each client in which compensation exceeds $500. And then there is a late fine of $25 per day. Other cities also include, well, Santa Clara County and San Jose also include a late fee for any reports that are late, but I'll get into that in a little bit. So there is reporting required two times a year. And it would require all the information provided at registration as well as any payments to lobbyists or services rendered to the city or the city officials. And there are other options for what is required to be reported. We have included in attach, I think it was attachment B, that San Jose has additional requirements for reporting and disclosure than what we've included in the draft today. And they can be included if the council desires. And those include payments made by lobbyists, lobbyist campaign contributions, and lobbyist donations made on behalf of city officials. So here are the examples of comparison fees in other cities. There is a, we did make a correction to this data. Registered lobbyists in Santa Clara County is 22. Previously, we had stated 66, but that was because we were counting their reports, their report submissions. And so we've reduced that for the actual individual lobbyists. And so here you can see that the different types of fees and our proposal, our proposed ordinance includes all these fees except for the late lobbyist report fine, which can be included at council's direction. Again, the fees, we do not have the amendments to the fee schedule today and that we've brought forward with the annual fee schedule update. So as written, the ordinance will become operative July, July 1. And this is because it, we need time to develop this process, develop the registration process and the report submission process. We need to analyze how much this program will cost to administer in order to develop the fees. And then also include these reports and registration in the city's retention schedule. So enforcement refers back to the city's general penalty provisions and lessons learned from other cities. They, we spoke with Santa Clara and they estimated maybe 100 staff hours per year with more initially for the initial setup of the program. Enforcement is a challenge for them as it's, you know, it's really by complaint basis. Oh, somebody came to speak and they were not, they didn't identify themselves as a lobbyist. Or if we find out they are lobbyists, they aren't registered, then we need to go and reach out to them and to get them to register. And then they also mentioned that facilitating lobbyist identification, that teleconference meetings can be challenging. In person, it's easier because you can include a section on the speaker card, but online, it's a little more difficult. And so the recommended action is to conduct the first reading. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, great. Does anyone have questions with regard to the staff presentation? Okay, I'll go ahead and ask a question regarding the business owner exemption. Can you elaborate on that, Katie? I am just trying to understand what would exempt potentially a, a business or small business owner from having to register? What, what kind of tangible example could you provide?
So I'll allow the City Attorney to chime in if she would wish. But just to start it off, I think the intent was if it was a small, like a small business owner that was going to be impacted, for example, our vaping ordinance that we brought last year, a small business owner, if they were the owner, could come and speak and they wouldn't be considered a lobbyist and have to register and pay the fees. So that is an example. Perhaps Heather might have other to add?
Whoops, Heather, unfortunately, we aren't able to hear you.
I see, sorry about that, air. So businesses are required to register if they have officers or employees who are spending 10 hours a year to lobby the city. And this would clear, this exemption provides that if the only contacts from the business is from the owner of the business and the business does not otherwise have any contract lobbyists that they've hired or employees that are engaging in lobbying, then they don't need to register as, as a business lobbyist.
I see, so, so 10 hours is a tangible threshold. And it would have to be the business owner that would be exempt. Anyone that the business owner hires, even if it's under 10 hours, would need to fall under the registration requirements. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Are there any other questions from council at this point? I see Councilmember Wei, you have your hand up.
Yes, I have a question for staff because I know we are, our staff time is pretty limited and we are, because of economic downturn, we are sort of not And we are, because of economic downturn, we are sort of not hiring more staff. So this ordinance is going to take a lot of time to implement and to chase after people who talk and not registered and to, how is the implementation? And I heard that the city of Santa Clara said it's challenging. So what kind of challenging? So what I'm trying to get is we want an ordinance that can work, right? If it's taking a lot of staff time and it's very hard to implement, I'm, I'm wondering, how's the staff thinking about this? Is it really challenging? It's going to take a lot more time? And are, are we going to be able to implement it?
Okay, anyone on staff care to answer Councilmember Way's question? Katie?
Yeah, so the Santa Clara estimated that it takes about 100 staff hours a year to administer this program. I think it would really depend on how many we have to chase down and how many choose to violate. So it's really hard to estimate. Is it going to take additional staff time? Yes. Whether or not it's doable, I think, I believe that it is. The city clerk could speak to that a little bit more, but again, we haven't had the time to be able to develop the program as of yet. And it will take additional time and setup. The setup's probably going to be the most time intensive portion of it. But ongoing, we, we expect to be around the same as Santa Clara in which it'd be around $100 a year.
Yeah, and to, to further that a little bit for Councilmember Way. We will put the program together and then try it out. And then what would happen is we might provide an estimated amount of staff we might need additionally if we needed it. But we wouldn't really know that until we kind of spent a year trying to do it and then come back to council saying, hey, this programmatic ad last year, it looks like it's going to cost us, I'm going to make something up. Half a work year in code enforcement or a full work year, something like that. That's how we normally do it. It's hard to say at this, at this point.
Okay, great. Any other questions before I open it up for public comment? I see Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up as well.
Okay, thank you Katie for the report. I'm just wondering, after looking at, I believe it was attachment B from San Jose, could you kind of summarize what sorts of benefits we would get if we were to include that or, or direct staff somehow to include what San Jose has?
Right. And so those were the other options that I mentioned earlier. And so in summary, they go into more detail and specifics about them, but overarching, it would add more disclosure of payments made by lobbyists, lobbyist campaign contributions, and lobbyist donations made on behalf of city officials. Is kind of the summary. But they do have specific nuances that perhaps the city attorney's office can speak to if you have questions on them.
Okay, any other questions from Councilmember Moore? No? Okay, great. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised.
Yeah. Okay, hi. I, I guess when I seconded the motion, I wasn't expecting a full form of the ordinance. I thought we would have a study session and see how this, what kind of lobbying ordinance it might be. It seems very complicated, more than I imagined. So I'm wondering for in Santa Clara, what kind of people or organization do register, do fit the requirement to be registered as lobbyists and how many are there? And what kind of organization are like at the borderline and maybe causing confusion? Do I have that information?
So we included a desk item today that included the list of lobbyists from other cities. And so we can, we have examples. And if you are, you'll be open that attachment, but I can share that.
Did you email that? Because I was looking for.
So it was sent out by the city clerk's office. So here is a list of the city of Santa Clara's lobbyists, just to get an idea. Some of the people that they're lobbying or.
Sorry, it's kind of too small for me to see.
Let me try to zoom in. So here are some. They actually list their names and then the organization. PG&E, Silicon Valley, Central Chamber of Commerce, Irvine Company.
That's a lot.
It's a lot. So I had a slide earlier that I think it had 68 in Santa Clara, 22 in the county. And the last one escapes me, it's 100 and something for San Jose. If you want the specific number, I can go for it.
Oh, and do we know what project or what issue they were lobbying for? Do they need to disclose that in their registration?
Yeah, they do.
Oh, so.
This was just something we pulled in order to get a list of registrants and their clients. But it could be any, any legislative or administrative action taken by the city or its body.
So do you have some idea what issues they are lobbying for?
I don't at this time.
I believe the Santa Clara registration might list the issues on the right side.
On the right side.
My question is, do we recognize any one of them?
Oh no, I don't see it there. Yeah.
It might be at Santa Clara.
I'm just wondering, do I have an issue that really people will lobby us for? How?
Yeah, do we recognize any one of them that ever come to our city?
I, I don't want to make this a free for all discussion. I, I did recognize these people.
Okay.
So, are there any other questions? I mean, clearly we have this material. And so I'll go ahead and open it up for the public if anyone would like to speak on that.
I did have one.
Willie, you did, you did have your hand up before we opened it up to the public. So Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, just, so I, I think I just heard that city issues. But what about people campaigning for city council and stuff? Does that fall under this? I mean, if, if an organization is lobbying to try and get somebody specific elected?
No, this, this defines the city actions that, that lobbyists are trying to influence. And so there's administrative actions, which is the drafting development proposal or recommendation of any rule, regulation, agreement, or contract, permit licensing, or hiring action. There's legislative actions that some people might be trying to influence, which includes, you know, supporting or trying to modify or oppose conduct or otherwise intentionally influencing behavior of city officials by, you know, means of, oh, I'm sorry, legislative action. Modifying or enacting or defeating resolutions, ordinances, reports, nominations, and as well as actions by the committees of the city or granting or approving contracts or agreements. And so this isn't, I mean, there, this isn't requiring reporting of influencing to elect a city council member. There is FPPC reporting requirements related to campaigns that, that people who are running for elected office need to report as part of their campaign reporting requirements. And that's regulated through the state Fair Political Practices Commission under the Political Reform Act. I will say that the, the additional reporting requirements that San Jose has in its ordinance would require if there is a lobbyist trying to influence some city action, like granting of a contract or, or some, adopting some ordinance, San Jose would require them to report their campaign contributions to council members if, if they're trying to influence some city council action, but I, I think that answers your question.
Yeah, no, that is a good, thank you. Thank you for adding that last part because I know that that was part of Katie's presentation. So, okay, seeing no other questions from council members, I will go ahead and open it to the public for public comment. I have one hand raised at this point from Rick Kitson. And I remind the public that if you want to speak on this, you'll need to raise your hand by the end of the first comment. And so, Rick, welcome. And Rick, you'll need to unmute yourself if you'd like to speak.
I'll stop the stay muted button. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for your time. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. This item has come up between meetings of the chamber board. But as someone who appreciates the very important step that the council is considering here to help improve transparency in local government, I personally strongly endorse this effort. But of course, the thinking about what we are doing as a chamber, I really just have questions to staff and council about ongoing efforts on behalf of the chamber.
I'm sorry, Rick, unfortunately, you're cutting in and out and we can't hear you now. And in fact, you cut out for a moment from the meeting. Let me, so you're at 1:55. I'll ask staff to set that there. I'll go on to the next speaker and get back to you if you are able to finish your comments at that point. Our next speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome Peggy, followed by Lisa Warren and I presume Jennifer Griffin.
Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, council members and staff. First, I, I find this confusing, trying to figure out who fits into what little box. Personally, I think just restricting past city council members and key city employees from lobbying for five years after they've left would be very simple and catch a lot of lobbying. The specification of public official, does that mean like chamber officials, Lions Club, 501(c)(3) members, you know, asking to meet with a council member about an issue? If this passes, how are you going to tell people that this is the new law? You need organizations, contractors, businesses, schools, Verizon, PG&E, Recology, all these people looking at the San Jose list need to be notified because they're not looking at what new laws Cupertino passed. Somebody's going to have to tell them they need to register. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Our next speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
The mute button is doing very weird things. Okay. So this is, in my opinion, long overdue. I think it's a must as far as I'm concerned, not just for Cupertino, but for any city at this point in time. But I've seen, well, I do also have some confusion about who fits into what bucket. And I absolutely love Peggy's suggestion of limiting lobbying from past officials, that that would have to be labeled correctly so it made, was perfectly clear. And I just wonder also, the, the media publishing and broadcasting news, that second bullet point and the exemptions, I'm wondering who might be able to wiggle themselves into that category to be exempt when their broadcasting and editorials are just all homegrown and not professional? That's just a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Let's go back to Rick. Rick, you're back here. And so I'll unmute you. And you have approximately a minute.
Okay. Thank you. Again, just as someone who's been around the public sector and Cupertino, it's an important effort, as I think we've heard from everyone. It is a bit confusing. Specifically, I think I was in the middle of articulating just generally the improvement for processes, civic processes, certain types of permitting. We expect to weigh in on something coming before the council regarding a land use permit in the next, in the next council meeting. Is that lobbying? You know, perhaps it is and that's, that's an easy question. More detailed is item J 12 subsection I, or it's a paragraph under subsection 12 under subsection J on page four. It explains about the application of exemptions to businesses or organizations. And as someone not being an attorney, it's very unclear what that clarification or explanation means. So I would just ask for further clarification of what that exemption applies for or what that actually might mean in, in layman's English. But that's, that's all. Thank you. And, and thank you for promoting transparency in, in our local community.
Thank you, Rick. Our next speaker is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Can you all hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yes, this is a very interesting, important change. The first time I became aware of this was at least over 10, 12 years ago when I was at a San Jose city council meeting. And I noticed that they did require people who were lobbyists to actually say this. I didn't, I didn't really understand at the time what it was, but now I do. And I, I think other, that certainly they are not the only city to require this. How it's applied though, is certainly going to be one for the record book because the topic is so complicated. I, I will say right now, I think it's even way more complicated than it was 12 years ago. Because you have media, you have Facebook, you have Twitter, you have Sacramento, you have federal, you have DC, you have TV. It's, things have changed in the last 15 years, but how it's applied is probably very, very important because someone can wear many different hats and different guises of where they are. And, and many, many times it does make a difference as to what information is received, given decisions that are made by particularly San Jose city council meeting, San Jose city council members, et cetera, other cities. But I, I think trying to tackle it is a really important step. How it's carried out may be something that is refined as we go along, but it's probably needed very, very badly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Let's bring it back to, to council. Let me, let me just ask staff some follow up questions based upon the public comments. There was a, a comment with regard to having a prohibition after one is termed out of or leaves elected office from lobbying. Is that something we could potentially add to this, Madam City Attorney?
It is something you could potentially add. I would need more time to research exactly how we would do that. I'm not sure I'll be ready to do that tonight.
Understood. And then with regard to the, the page four reference of, of Rick Kitson, it seemed like he wanted a little bit more clarity with regard to businesses and organizations. Is that, can, can we provide a little bit of that?
Sure, I can provide that again. So a, a business needs to register as a lobbyist if I think of, for instance, there's, there's. I think of, for instance, there's, there's contract lobbyists, which are people that are hired to lobby for a business, and so we understand that. The business lobbyist is, is basically businesses who have in-house lobbyists, you know, so they're not contracting out. They have someone they've hired who's, who lobbies for the business, and so this is intended to capture that sort of situation. So if, if a business has employees or officials who are spending 10 hours or more in a year to lobby the city, they would, they would need to register. There is, however, an exception to this registration requirement for business lobbyists that says that if the, if there's a business where the only person lobbying for the business is the owner, and the business isn't otherwise having a, hiring a lobbyist to lobby for them and doesn't have employees lobbying for them, then, then the owner can spend, you know, more than 10 hours lobbying the city. There is a narrowing of that exception that says that, that you don't get to fall under that exception, though, if someone is actually hiring the, the owner to be a contract lobbyist, or if the owner is spending a lot of money to tell people to go directly lobby city councils. So it's basically saying, just because you're an owner, you don't get exempt if, if you're otherwise being contracted to be a lobbyist for someone else. So I realize it's a little confusing. I think that, you know, we were modeling, modeling after Santa Clara, and I think some of these and, and the county, and I think some of these clarifications were met, were adopted later as they implemented their ordinance to try to clarify what was and wasn't covered, and what made sense and what doesn't make sense. And I agree, it's become a little complicated, but I think we tried to simplify it as much as, as possible.
And what about the nonprofit business lobbying organization of a 501(c)(6), such as a Chamber of Commerce? You do have nonprofits in there listed as exemptions if they're not getting paid per se, so what about that particular example?
That's right. You know, assuming the chamber is a nonprofit 501(c)(3), they would be they would be exempt unless they're, unless the nonprofit is, is receiving donations for a specific issue or project and, and is lobbying using those, those, that funding for that issue. So if, for instance, if a nonprofit says, "We want to defeat this proposed ordinance to regulate whatever, bird safe, give us money to help us lobby the city to do that," and someone, you know, gives the, the nonprofit the money to do that, then they fall outside of the exemption. They would have to register that with the city.
I see. And so, okay.
And to add, the language in the ordinance identifies nonprofit 501(c)(3) corporation.
Okay, right. Well, the chambers of commerce are 501(c)(6)'s that are set up particularly to lobby that, that jurisdiction.
So if that's the case, then I think they would not fall under this.
Well, but you were saying that if they were, if they're receiving a particular payment for a specific issue, right? Then that would capture, okay, well, then there's the
No, that, that kicks them out of the exemption.
Kicks them out of it. Got it, got it. Okay. Now, Jennifer Griffin had mentioned that people wear different hats.
I should clarify, sorry, that exemption three also mentions Chamber of Commerce, so let me look at that. So this is persons reimbursed only for their reasonable travel, meals, or incidental expenses included, but not limited to uncompensated members or directors of nonprofit organizations such as Chamber of Commerce. So if, if there's nonprofits whose, who has volunteer, or, you know, has, has members of that nonprofit who isn't otherwise getting paid by the nonprofit, if they're, you know, they're just, say, a volunteer officer, then they could fall under that exemption three.
Well, I did see Chamber of Commerce listed in one of the lists that Katie was
Yeah, and that was exemption three. I'm sorry, I was focusing on the nonprofit otherwise.
Right, no, there was a 13-page document listing the, the actual registered lobbyists. And I wasn't sure if that was falling under the exempted group or the registered group, but I did see chambers of commerce from, I believe it was San Jose.
So they have, this is funny because I was looking at it when that got brought up. Silicon Valley Central Chamber of Commerce does register as a lobbyist, but they do have Santa Clara Chamber of Commerce as exempt.
I see. Okay. So, so, so based upon San Jose's provisions, the San Jose, Silicon Valley Chamber of Commerce, or whatever they're calling themselves right now, is, is registering. Is that, is that what you're indicating?
Under San, in the city of Santa Clara.
Santa Clara. Okay, okay. Now, Jennifer Griffin mentioned people have more than one hat. Would it be possible, under this ordinance as written, this proposed ordinance as written, for someone to say, "Well, I'm not speaking as, in my paid lobbyist capacity. I'm actually just speaking as, for example, a resident." Is that something that one could potentially do under this ordinance, or would one still have to disclose if one were, in fact, receiving lobbyist funding?
If they're being paid by a client to lobby the city on an issue, they would need to disclose.
So they couldn't get out of it by saying, "Look, I'm just speaking as, as a resident here."
Not if they're getting paid for it, no.
All right, great. Are there any other follow-up questions? Let's, let's limit these to what the members of the public were saying, since we did have our opportunity. I, I try to capture their questions. I don't see, I do see one hand. It's not, not up anymore. Okay, so at this time, I would like to ask our council to put forward a motion on the table for the purposes of discussion, and I remind that the default motion is, is the recommended action of conducting the first reading of ordinance number 21-2222. And would anyone like to, Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised. Would you like to read that motion, or?
Okay, I can do the motion.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow moves the recommended action. Would anyone like to second?
I'll second.
Okay. Councilmember Willie, thank you. Seconds. And so, Vice Mayor Chow, you do have your hand raised as well, and so would you like to comment or deliberate on the motion on the table?
Yeah. So, so it seems the person, this, this ordinance defines legislative action to be actions taken by the council or the commission. So how about city staff? Wouldn't usually lobbyists also lobby city staff for, like, contract or other administrative things?
Yes.
A lot of administrative approval.
Yes, and so lobbying is defined as trying to influence legislative action or administrative action. So there is also a definition in the ordinance of administrative action that someone may be trying to lobby to influence.
Okay, good. And so for someone who is exempt from registering, are they still required to disclose all their activities? Because I think the intention is really transparency, it's not really they are paid or not.
No, they're not required to disclose if they're exempt from the definition of lobbyist. Only lobbyists are required to disclose.
So we are really only asking professional lobbyists to, to register?
There's three definitions of lobbyists. There's contract lobbyists who are getting paid to lobby. There's lobbyists who are lobbying on behalf of a business that employs them or they work for. And there's also expenditure lobbyists, which are people who are urging other people to directly contact city council and to sway the actions, and they've spent more than $5,000 to do that urging.
So then we can, we don't really know, we can't really discuss all about the activity. Okay, anyway. And also, we are exempting people who are reimbursed for their travel, meals, and other expenses. Basically, a lot of people could get paid just by these compensations. Sometimes expenses, even travel time, but then they are exempt right now, right?
Under the draft of the ordinance, yes, they would be.
And another thing is, so if a nonprofit raises public funding for a mission of the nonprofit, and then with officers of nonprofit lobbying for the cost, that means their mission, that means they are kind of like paid through the donation, are they not?
The individual is not, but the nonprofit is.
But the individual is not. And then another question is, okay, the business lobbyists, for example, raise their aggregate of 10 hours. So does that mean they don't have to register and report until they aggregate it for 10 hours? And who is keeping track of that? And similarly, for expenditure lobbyists, it's up to like $5,000. That means do they get to report at the end of the calendar year and say, "Oops, it's more than $5,000. I didn't register." So how?
Lobbyists are required to register within 15 days of meeting the threshold to, to, to qualify them as a lobbyist, whether it's at the beginning of the year or the middle of the year.
Okay, so they are, they should keep track themselves.
That's right.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Chow, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Chow, rather. Councilmember Moore.
Okay, so I was wondering if I could make a friendly amendment to the motion, and I would like those elements from Attachment B, San Jose Code of Ordinances, Title 12, Chapter 12.12 of the San Jose Municipal Lobbying Ordinance, which are not in conflict with the ordinance number 21-2222.
Vice Mayor Chow, will you accept Councilmember Moore's friendly amendment?
Sorry, can you read that again and bring up the document?
Okay, so I move to amend the, your main motion to include Attachment B from the San Jose Code of Ordinances, Title 12, Chapter 12.12, of the San Jose Municipal Lobbying Code. Those items which are not in conflict with the ordinance number 21-2222.
So all of the items?
Everything that's not in conflict with what we have already.
So anything that supplements, essentially, is what you're saying?
So some of them might be in conflict?
We've already reviewed them, and we do have a version of the ordinance that includes San Jose's reporting requirement.
Oh, okay.
Okay, great. Then let, let us take Councilmember Moore's friendly amendment to be a request to pass the version of the ordinance that staff has created that incorporates that document as, which is Attachment B to our materials. Vice Mayor Chow, will you accept that friendly amendment?
Okay.
And Councilmember Willie, will you second that friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, great. Councilmember Moore, did you have any more comments or deliberation?
No, I just feel that this is a really excellent step in the right direction for transparency.
Great, thank you very much. And Councilmember Wei, you have your hand up.
Yes, just a question for our city attorney, Heather. So the exceptions, is it because of their First Amendment right, or, you know, we, is it something we have to follow? For example, there was a suggestion that maybe we should not let past council members talk, but that, could that be infringed on their First Amendment right? Is that right? You know, how would we go to do that?
That suggestion is one that I would need more time to, to consider and, and whether, exactly how council could do it and if they can do it. I'm not prepared at now to talk about that. I don't know, is the answer. There is already some regulations of past officials and how much they can, when they could come back and influence city decisions, and so I'd have to see how the proposal interacts with that.
So the quarter one doesn't have it. Okay, thank you, yeah.
No, but it would require past officials to, to register, just as anybody else does under, under the regulations that are, you are being considered now.
Right, past officials exempted from the
They're paid, right.
Okay, great.
Yes, if they're paid or, or work for a business, that sort of thing.
Okay, very good. Our next deliberator is Councilmember Willie. You have your hands up?
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I think we, pretty much, we all see how things have, have really been accentuated in the last year or two or four. And that transparency really does need to be taken seriously. And I, I see this as being our first step. And yes, we'll, I think we're, we're seriously going to learn as we go, and we'll be able to adjust based on what we find. But I think we need to be sure that the community is, is really seeing the true picture. When they're, when information is conveyed to them, whether it's on TV or on postcards in their mailbox, they truly do need to know, you know, where's it coming from and how should they be reviewing it? And so I do think we need to, to move forward on this and realize there may be some adjustments that do need to be made, but we should not delay this because we need to dot every i and cross every t tonight. And so that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. I'll, I'll make some brief comments. I, I really appreciate staff's efforts here. And I think that is a very thoughtful set of comments and questions that we've had from council and the public. I, having been the person who proposed this, think that it is a very solid idea. And for the interests of disclosure and transparency, as has been mentioned from all sectors of our, of our community here, I, I agree that this is a, a great start. So I do see Vice Mayor Chow has her hand up as well. Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, I think, yeah, this is a step in the right direction. I'm a little concerned how cumbersome it is to implement, but since San Jose and Santa Clara have done it, I'm, I'm willing to give it a try. And, but then one thing, the San Jose requires weekly report. Do we really need a weekly report? Maybe a monthly report would be sufficient?
Katie, you have, you're unmuted.
And Heather, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that our ordinance requires a weekly report. We still require the bimonthly. Did the, did the weekly end up being part of the San Jose piece?
So Katie, maybe you'd be good if you could, would you be able to share the draft amendments that, so that counts just for the record so that we can see what the first reading is? But, but no, the, the amendments we have prepared here adopt the additional reporting requirements from San Jose as far, as far as the additional items that are required to be reported. But they do keep the, the two times a year reporting requirement that was in the city's, the draft ordinance and that is in Santa Clara's ordinance. So, so that conflict was resolved for, in favor of the Santa Clara model and not the San Jose model, right? So that would not be, require weekly reports. It would just require reports two times a year.
What's nice with the San Jose one is they require the reporting of campaign contributions.
Right, and that, and that is being adopted in, or that would be adopted in this, this ordinance. And it looks like you might not have the most recent version. Katie, I'm sorry. I just see you have comments there, or maybe that is in there. Sorry.
All right, let's, let's scroll through the rest so that we do have it. It was a great idea to
So, so this is just adding definitions that were in the San Jose ordinance for the various additional things that are required to be reported. And then if you keep, oh, oh, well.
So at the top of the definitions, yes, if you're
Semi-annual is too infrequent. Weekly is too much, but semi-annual, maybe like quarterly.
Yeah.
So here are the definitions that Heather was mentioning that we've included to adjust to San Jose's additional reporting requirements. Do you want to walk through them slower?
I, I don't think so. I think if we just, I mean, unless a council member would like to see. But it's the same that were, was in San Jose's ordinance. We did
And then here's where we actually include the additional reporting requirements.
Vice Mayor Chow made a mention a moment ago about making it a quarterly reporting requirement. So Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to suggest that as a, as a change?
Yeah.
Councilmember Willie, are you amenable to that change? Making it a quarterly, so that's not semi-annual?
Yes, sounds good.
Okay, so we have two point one hundred, point one hundred in front of us. It would become a quarterly report. So it'd be quarterly reports for the prior three month period. And so the first word in that sense would become quarterly. And then we would pick the fifteenth of April as well as, is it October? Would it be October, April and October fifteenth as well?
Sounds right.
And April fifteenth?
The order is a bit strange.
Right.
It is a lot strange.
I, I, I think with the, well, necessarily, because you're talking about the fiscal year.
The year, yeah.
July, October, January, April, so that is actually.
Yeah, that's true.
And, and enactment apparently is going to start in the fiscal year, so that, that actually is, that tracks. Heather, you're, you're saying something?
I think that looks right, yeah, I'm just seeing if there's any other conforming amendments we need to make.
So we don't have a copy of this modified ordinance in the package, right? And anything else that's different from the version that's posted there? That's directly from San Jose?
No, other than importing the additional requirements for what to report, you know, what to include in the report and the definitions of those.
And Katie, there, there is one more semi in there, yeah, that, that one. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and ask that we close the discussion. We have a motion on the table, including the modification in front of us. Let me close that loop and verify, I don't remember if I did, I apologize. Councilmember Willie, did you second the change to quarterly reporting?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
I, I apologize for this, but did you conduct the first reading?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so I, I, we're gonna have to redo that roll call vote after our city clerk conducts that first reading.
This is the first reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash two-two-two-two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino adding chapter two point one zero zero, Regulation of Lobbying Activities, Title Two, Administration of Personnel of the City Municipal Code.
All right, Madam City Clerk, as, as modified by council's deliberation. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you very much. And our next item is, so we're at ten twenty-three right now. We are, we are a bit behind, however, this is our last item. Does anyone want to take a, a brief break at this point? I see one head shake. I don't, okay, so let's go ahead and continue with item number seventeen. The subject is consider adopting the two thousand twenty-one legislative platform. And that is an action item, it's not an ordinance. Do we have a staff report on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Katie, I'm our assistant to the city manager, and I will be presenting the legislative platform. And so every year we approve a legislative platform that helps to guide and inform official city positions on legislation. This platform allows the Legislative Review Committee of the city to take city positions on bills that align with this council-approved platform. If anything falls outside of this platform, that needs to be brought to the full council for a formal position. So the LRC, or the Legislative Review Committee, reviewed the platform on January eighth and recommended it unanimously for, for council adoption. Some of the notable changes were there is a new section on homelessness. There was, we added support for allowing remote or video conference public meetings. There was support, additional support and emphasis on preservation of natural resources, organic waste recycling and landfill diversion, as well as a, a portion to monitor square footage-based parcel taxes. And so the recommended action this evening is to adopt the proposed twenty-one legislative platform. And we do have our legislative consultant, Casey Elliott, with pounds in Public Affairs with us this evening if we do have specific questions.
Great, welcome, Casey. Is that the end of your presentation, Katie?
Yes.
Casey, did you want to say a few words?
In deference to your time, I'm just here to happy to answer any questions that you may have on specific items within the platform or, or any application of the platform that would be used in, in our advocate on the S U's behalf.
That's, that's excellent. Does anyone from council have any? Does anyone from council have any questions? I don't see any hand, oh, actually, Councilmember Wei, you have your hand raised.
Yes, I'm, I have, I have a question on page six, under Housing and Community Development, on the first item. I'd like to make a little bit, I, when I read it, it's not as consistent that I was, I was looking in. It has some adjectives in there that, so I want some opinions on it. So I'm gonna read it. The city acknowledges that California is currently facing dramatic job housing imbalance, severe income disparity and lack of transit options. I have an issue with two affordable areas, because I think it's led of, lack of transit options, period. Whether it's to any areas. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that if we take off that to affordable areas, because when I read other platforms, when we talk about affordable housing, it also talks about transit that's lacking. So it's covered there. And this is more the general description. And to come, the second sentence, the rising cost of housing is one symptom of the deeper economic problem, which can only be solved. I have trouble with that only, because I think there are many other ways you can solve this, the deeper housing, rising cost. So I would suggest we take off that only. And then it comes to be solved by addressing excessive job growth. I like to think it should be more consistent with the previous sentence. So instead of excessive job, job growth.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Wei, Councilmember Wei? Let me, let me, let me just invite questions at this point before I open it up for discussion. And if, if there are questions of the presentation or disinformation, questions at this point? Okay, great. Does anyone on council have those questions? I'm not seeing those hands raised. So, so I do see a member of the public with her hand raised. And so I'll open it up for a public comment before we bring it back for a, a motion and discussion and deliberation. Jennifer Griffin has her hand raised. And I just remind the other members of the public here that please raise your hand before this first speaker is done in order to be called. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, thank you. To me, because of things that have happened, especially with the DC issues and Sacramento, this, having this platform for the Legislative Committee and the City Council, to me, is one of the highest imperatives in my current functioning right now as a citizen of Cupertino and a citizen of California and a citizen of the United States. I cannot begin to state how imperative that the public is aware of what is happening in Sacramento and federally. SB nine, SB ten are travesties to the integrity of the state. And I take great personal offense in those bills, because they are, they are forcing the public to try to have to deal with issues that are non-transparent. There are things that are being held back from the public. There, I, I have sent several letters to you all stating my concerns that, and I, I would take great exception to any wording on the housing and the Legislative Legislative Committee, that that wording on housing be changed tonight. The, we are going into an, an area where the public is, is, there is a lot of information being withheld from the public by our politicians. And we're, we saw what happened in DC. Someone tried to take the Capitol, someone is trying to take over Sacramento. This is a very, very, very volatile area. And I want to make sure that Cupertino and the public is aware of the great, great dimensions of emergency that are going on. I, this is something that is highest imperative to me. What we saw happen in DC is happening in Sacramento. I, and also this, the, the governor has something called the Housing Accountability Unit. There is no oversight on that, and they're going to load that board with people who are appointed. And the public has no way. I, 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 I am absolutely appalled at some of the things that are happening in Sacramento. So please, do not change any of the wording unless it is discussed thoroughly. It, this is, this is as every bit as imminent disaster as what happened in DC. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, there are no other hands raised from the public. And so we will bring it back to council. I, I would like to ask for a motion so that we can begin commenting and deliberating on this item.
I'm so moved.
Okay, Councilmember Wei, I take it that you move the recommended action to adopt the proposed twenty-one legislative platform? Yes, that was Councilmember Wei, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Is there anybody who would like to second that?
I'll second, there we go.
Okay. Councilmember Willie or Councilmember Moore, either, either one? Well, we'll, we'll go with, anyone care, Councilmember Willie, would you care to defer your second to Councilmember Moore?
Sure, I'll defer to.
Okay, Councilmember Wei, motions and Councilmember Moore seconds, thank you, Councilmember Willie. And would anyone like to kick off our deliberation? Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up.
Sure, okay, so I am assigned to the LRC this year. And again, it's going to be a, a good deal of work. I would point, if you're, when you're looking at the legislative platform, I would point to the words support and oppose and monitor. In my opinion, for those are the most important for what we're going to be bringing to council for suggestions. And we were careful about the use of those words. So when things were, are more contentious, they would get monitor as opposed to support or oppose. So for instance, and, and the Vice Mayor and I talked about this with regards to square footage parcel tax, we wanted to be very open about that, and so we use the language monitor. So we would be open and fair about that. So when you, when you've gone through it, just look for those key words and, you know, it'll make a lot more sense.
Great, thank you very much for your work and for your comments, Councilmember Moore. Would anyone else like to comment? Councilmember Wei, yes?
So thank you, Mayor Paul. So this is the right time for me to talk about my minor edits on number, page number six, number one. I just wanted to be more consistent. So instead of saying to affordable areas, just delete that, just because we're lacking transit options, period. And then take off only, because I feel that we might find more other options that can solve these issues. And to be consistent with job housing balance, so instead of saying excessive job growth, change to job has housing balance, so the whole paragraph kind of go together. That's just my minor added suggestions. And then I really like what we're doing, monitor, support and oppose. That give us, you know, a lot of options and a lot of, like Katie says, a lot of things that we can really monitor it, or we're gonna oppose it, or we're gonna support it.
Okay, so let me ask you, at this point, you are the person who made the motion. What would you like to do with your motion on the table?
Like to do the minor language change to delete to affordable areas, delete only and change excessive job growth to, to job housing balance.
Okay, before I ask you to withdraw that in favor of your language modifications, let me ask council, is there anybody that would second those, those modifications in language proposed by Councilmember Wei? Councilmember Moore, your hand is up, is it for the purpose of?
Oh, well, Councilmember Wei, I believe you had mentioned striking the word only, and I am inclined to agree with that. And I'll have to think about the other, the other two edits, whether or not I would support it. But I, if you want to put the strike of the word only, I think that is more accurate, because there could be other things which could solve the rising cost issue. You know, constraints like they did in Vancouver, for instance. So I, I, I agree that the word only should not be there, because it's inaccurate.
Okay, well, for the sake of moving the discussion along, Councilmember Wei, would you be willing to withdraw your motion and resubmit with that modification? Which, to be very specific, on page six of the red lines, under Housing and Community Development, number one, you would be deleting the word only.
Do, do you want to hear what Vice Mayor Chow has to say?
I, 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 well, you, you are the mover and Councilmember Moore was the seconder, and so if you would be willing to put that on, we could make that change for the sake of further discussion.
Okay, so I'd like to really be consistent, because excessive job growth, to me, is a very subjective descriptive thing. So if we go back to job housing balance, that's really is the, one of the issues that we can really solve. So I would like to ask to see if Councilmember Moore would be, would be, you know, would be agreeable to that? If you take a look at it and see what you think. Also, I'm okay with it, yeah.
Okay, so I'm, yeah, so I had the same issue on the, on the planning commission. So I do not want the jobs to housing imbalance to be removed. And it's something that is now in the, in the metrics for from HCD in the, in the code, that they look at the jobs to housing imbalance. And for that reason, I don't want it removed, and I, and I'm concerned that it, for certain projects, that that language is, is very important.
Actually, I want to put that in, I don't want to remove it. I want to put job housing imbalance to replace excessive job growth, because I think that describes more of the project, that describe more we can solve the housing issues.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about this. So it starts off, the city, the city acknowledged that California is currently facing dramatic jobs to house, job housing imbalance. Okay, and then we'll move on. Severe income disparity and lack of transit options to, you wanted to change that from affordable areas to just strike it.
Yeah, because I think it's option to everywhere.
Okay, okay, so we'll keep moving. The rising cost of housing is one symptom of the deeper economic problems, which can strike only, which can be solved by addressing the, it should be maybe solved, by addressing, and you don't want it excessive job growth.
Want to replace back to job housing imbalance, because I think that's a more appropriate description. description of what we're, we're trying to do. I, I like job housing balance. I think that's in balance. I think that's a really great way to.
Okay, which may be solved by addressing the jobs housing imbalance. Okay, okay, I, I, I can follow that. Sure, I'm good with that. Yes.
Okay, uh, so let me, let me clarify that. You, okay, so Councilmember Way is withdrawing her motion. Uh, she is, she is substituting it with a motion that strikes only, uh, from, from, from point one under housing and community development and substitutes the, the three words excessive job growth with job ha- dash housing imbalance, uh, also in point one under housing and community development.
Would you like to see a red line of that, Mr. Mayor?
Um, sure, I, I, I think, I think I captured it, but if you'd like to put up a red line, that would be, that would be great. And, uh, Councilmember Moore seconds that. Um, so, okay, can be solved by addressing the job housing imbalance. Okay, great. So Vice Mayor Chow, oh, uh, Councilmember Moore, are your, are your comments done? Your hand is still raised. Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised.
Okay, so regarding the word only, I think the original intent when we put in this sentence is because a lot of bills only address housing. They don't address transit affordability. So the intent of, um, this sentence was to stress that we cannot solve this problem unless we consider all of this together. We cannot solve the problem if we just say that's build housing, build housing, build housing, right? Because it's a problem that's really transit options and, and, and housing and job all together needs, we need to consider everything together. That was the intent. It's not like one of these should, could be solved by one. It's just, it's stressed that you cannot solve by focusing only on housing. So I don't know. That, that was the reason only was there. Only by doing this together, the, the, the focus is really only be solved by addressing these three together. You cannot solve it by addressing them separately.
Okay, oh, okay, let, let's just cut it off there because you've made your point and, uh, you're starting to just be a tad repetitive on it. So let me, let me just say, I actually agree with you. I, I like the original language better, both on the only point, uh, and on the point with regard to excessive job growth. Because I think what happens, and I agree with your only point, so I won't repeat it. I think when you take out excessive job growth and you put in instead job housing imbalance in that part, uh, what you end up doing is basically saying, um, as long as you balance out the job growth with sufficient amounts of housing to meet that, you're basically, uh, okay. And so I, I think the, the effect of that language is basically amplifying, um, the, uh, the invitation to, uh, to, to put, uh, put stuff there when I, I, I would prefer that the emphasis be on the availability of housing. Um, so I, I would suggest, in, in fact, in, in, in my preference rises to the level of probably voting against what's on the table right now. So I, I would probably, um, vote for something where only is struck. I, I understand your concern with that, Vice Mayor Chow. But for me, uh, substituting excessive job growth with job housing imbalance, I think very much changes the nature of that preface. And I know this is only prefatory, uh, language, but I, I would, I would want that back, uh, frankly. Um, so, so that's my comment. Um, Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand up, but, uh, I, I, I think, uh, Councilmember, now it's down, great. So Councilmember Moore, your hand is up, uh, as well?
Um, yes, it is. Uh, well, we, we can spend a lot of time on this language, uh, but, uh, for me, on being on the LRC, uh, I'm looking for the word oppose, oppose, support, and, uh, so I've, I have my marching orders. So I just, you, we can, we can, I'll, I'll take this paragraph any way, any way you want to fiddle with it, either, either addition I'm good with, but just understand that that's, that's what's gonna.
That's why you put your priorities on the oppose and support and, okay, monitor, got it, got it. Uh, Councilmember Willie, your hand is up.
Yeah, just to, you know, get comments from all of us, I, I am in favor of Mayor Paul's, uh, recommendation. I think that is the essence of what our community expects. So, um, yes, I'll stick with that. Thank you.
Um, okay, well, that being the case, you know, um, Councilmember Way, I want to afford you the opportunity of, of having the motion that we vote for. Otherwise, I would put in a substitute motion based on the original language. Um, you know, I, I could, you know, negotiate with the word only, but I think, you know, my personal preference is to have excessive job growth in there. So I'd like to provide you that opportunity to go ahead and, you know, change that back to.
Okay, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Moore. It, really, this is just a language thing, and that, the oppose, the, uh, support and the, uh, monitor is actually more important. So I'm not, I'm not gonna insist on my, uh, word change.
Okay, great. I, I, I really appreciate that. That, that's, uh, very appreciated. So, so let's, let's go with the original language, if that's, uh, amenable to everyone. Um, and, uh, just to formalize that, Councilmember Way, your motion back on the table is as the staff recommendation goes, correct?
Yes.
And, uh, Councilmember Moore, you're fine with seconding that as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Um, seeing no other hands up, because Councilmember Willie, uh, you, you didn't make a comment. Um, if you, okay, great. Let us take a roll call vote. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, everyone, for your cooperation here. Uh, we are now at, uh, the last listed item, although not enumerated. That is council and staff comments and future agenda items. And I, I just want to, uh, make a quick comment before we start this. It, it's not a challenge necessarily to try to add more agenda items. I mean, if you have, you know, good ideas and things that, um, you know, kind of, and I remind everyone that our upcoming work plan, uh, meetings are coming up as well. Um, so, uh, i- if you have any commentary that you feel is, uh, useful to share with the public, um, or, you know, novel ideas for agenda items, by all means, feel free to share them at this point. Um, but overall, you know, I could tell you that our future work plan and agenda items is, is pretty full docket right now. Um, and so with that, I'll open it up to our raised hands. Um, and, uh, let me, let me actually, um, provide the opportunity for City Manager Fung, if you have any, uh, comments at this point before we go to council.
I, I will refrain from any comments of this.
Okay, great. So our first hand up is from, uh, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, uh, really quick, um, I'm not sure how we can do this, but I, if there's some way that we can, um, influence the legislation on SB thirty-five with regards to mixed use developments in the future, I don't know what we can do, um, but that needs to be, um, ironed out. It's very problematic. And also, uh, with regards to, uh, state legislation, the, uh, density bonus law with regards to heights, if there's some way that we can tie the heights with the amount of density bonus being, um, asked for. Thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, just two, two questions, uh, which I think are for the city manager. So we had the Lehigh, uh, presentation before, and at the end of that, I believe I asked, I said that, uh, I think it's such an important issue for our community that I think we need a quarterly update. And, uh, I'm just wondering, i- i- did that message come across? Are we gonna be able to have a quarterly update? Um, I think it's just kind of a study session, but a quarterly update so that the community does know. Can you give me an update?
Great, thank you, Councilmember Willie. I, I will mention that, um, I believe Supervisor Semidion's session is coming up, but, uh, staff, um, please feel free to supplement that with our future plans because we, we're indicating, uh, quarterly does seem, um, palatable to the community.
Yeah, um, I call it periodic only because what we're trying to do is provide meaningful updates. So if you are really rigid about making it exactly on the quarter, we may have no updates to provide. We're moving, we're moving along the lines with the county process, so we're trying to make it so. So we have the study session in preparation for Joe Semidian's session, right? So members of the public kind of get a study session in front of them, and then they have the public opportunity with Joe's town hall or whatever he's doing soon.
Excellent, and, and I did see, um, Public Works Director Roger Lee had turned on his camera briefly. Uh, Director Lee, did you want to say anything a- about that? Or was it just kind of a, um?
I, I was just confirming when Semidian's meeting was. I believe it's March, March third.
Right.
Yeah, that sounds right to me as well. Yes, that's, uh, in, right about a month, and so, uh, Councilmember Willie, I think it's taken under advisement. Uh, I think the public probably expects something on the order of maybe June, July, you know, that timeframe, a few months after that.
Just a couple of words to kind of complement what I'm getting at. It, yes, there may not be a, uh, physical update, uh, that, that, of things that have happened, but if that's truly the case, I think the residents want to know, wh- even if there's no change, what is the update on the, uh, uh, permit that expired and they're trying to get reactivated? What's the update on the permit for a second, uh, hit? And what's the update on the truck traffic? I mean, those key points that, you know, the, the residents are on the, the edge of their chairs and want to be kept abreast rather than waiting until, uh, something truly changes and, and then it's kind of too late, the cat's out of the bag. So that, that's.
So what you're looking for, uh, John, if I understand it then is, uh, say it's quarterly, then even if there's no change, we just report there's no change?
Yes, that they want to know that. Okay.
Okay.
And then the other one is very similar for the five G cells. I think we have a upcoming one, um, making sure any residents that are still listening. Uh, I think that was gonna be in.
April, May timeframe.
Yeah, April, May, and then we can maybe discuss at that time when a subsequent was because that's another very important topic to our community. So thank you. I'll leave it at.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Willie. I don't see other hands raised at this point. Um, would anyone like to? Vice Mayor Chow? Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, you'll need to unmute.
I proposed two items to Deb, but I forgot the, the second one. The first one was, uh, I hope that we, the, the staff would look into keeping, uh, the virtual meeting option open for all city council and commission meetings even when the pandemic is over, so that residents, especially those seniors and the parents with small kids can attend from the comfort of their home. I know there are challenges we face regarding wrong act and so, but I, I think that's, uh, the technology is there, let's figure out how we can do that. And I forgot the second, uh, Deb, do you remember?
Yeah, the second one was, um, with regard to our neighborhood watch and walk leader programs, uh, a revamping, but, um, what Liang, what Liang and I discussed was, we're already revamping it and I'm, uh, trying to make moves on that. If council wants to support that by trying to, say, encourage more membership and get out there and talk to people when the time is right, I'm happy with that. But that's the second thing that, um, that we spoke about.
Yeah, so the, because this program is already, um, an item that's being implemented, but for it, it seems that the, the, it hasn't grown much in the past two years. So I thought it's worthwhile to bring it back to the council agenda to get more visibility and council input on how to revamp it. And the Deb might have a difference of opinion on this. She think that she can take care of everything. She is so capable. But then I thought, be, be on the council agenda has the benefit that we can all put our brain together and give the community an update and, uh, visibility. So that's what I hope. It could be put back on the council work program as an item, um, even though it's a, a, uh, something in progress. Okay, another thing is, I'd like to clarify, the small cell study session, it appears to be only another study session, but then we do have requests from the community, I think for two items, um, to make the current municipal code more consistent, right? Like, uh, a hundred feet within the playground, I think there was another request. So if we are doing study session, that means we cannot address these requests.
Well, let me, um, let's, let's not get into the substance of, you know, potential direction, but, um, from the procedural perspective of a study session, I think that in the past we, we certainly have expressed sentiments and, uh, requests for future direction, um, of, of our staff at that point. So I, I would suggest that we go into the study session. Um, we can't make decisions, of course, uh, but we can provide, um, feedback and, you know, potentially, um, you know, sentiments expressed for, for future direction at that point.
Okay, so is it possible for the staff report to mention the request by the residents so that residents know there is this request on the table and that's something we could be considering and giving direction on? For transparency too.
Well, let's, um, we're in our first meeting in February, maybe, maybe staff can think about that and, instead of providing an off-the-cuff kind of, uh, answer, uh, revisit that when we're on council reports on the sixteenth. Um, was there anything else, Vice Mayor Chow, at this point?
That's all.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Um, Vice Mayor, sorry, Councilmember Way, did you have anything? Okay, um, I, I don't, um, I, I did have, um, just a, a brief thank you to staff, uh, for putting together, uh, the state of the city. I thought Brian Babcock did a wonderful job, um, as our, uh, Public Information Officer, you know, pulling together the various parts and, and the video staff did a really good job. So I was happy to, you know, uh, introduce our new council members and thank our, uh, existing ones, uh, for, for your service. Um, overall, it was very well received. I, I mean, I, I only got, um, one comment, you know, sort of saying, well, I'm not really sure about the Morion helmet, uh, logo, but it was actually very praising of the speech itself, so, so that was, uh, that was positive. Um, but in any event, um, I really want to, um, wish you a good night. Our next meeting, as, uh, I mentioned, is February sixteenth on our regularly scheduled, um, agendas. And so without any further ado, we're at our final item, which is adjournment, and we'll see you on the sixteenth of February. Thank you. Bye.